All right, we are live. Go ahead, Mayor.
There you go. Okay, so this will be the 12th virtual workshop regarding COVID-19 response and recovery. First thing we'll do is I'm going to turn it over to AZ, our Pierce County Health Officer, and Kelly from St. Croix County Health Office. So we'll let these two give us a presentation.
Great, thank you Mayor Dan, and good evening, everyone. My name is AZ Snyder. I'm the Health Officer and Public Health Director for Pierce County. I am a resident of the city of River Falls, so this is a special pleasure for me. And I have been with the Health Department for about two years, and my training is as an epidemiologist. And I'm going to let Kelly Ingham, my counterpart in St. Croix County, who has one-third of your city, introduce herself as well.
Hi, everyone, thanks so much for having us. And really, a special thanks to include us because we do share a city, which is a unique situation. Not everybody in Wisconsin has that. AZ is great to work with. You guys are lucky to have her there in Pierce County. My name, as she said, Kelly Ingham. I am a public health nurse. I am the Health Officer. My background is very varied among tribal health, clinic health, nurse educating. Served in a lot of roles, and I've been with St. Croix County for, it'll be two years in October.
Thanks, Kelly. So you'll see, you get the best of both worlds, both a public health nurse and an epidemiologist. Aren't you lucky? So I'm going to go ahead and share my presentation here. Can you guys see my presentation? Yes, okay, great. So today, we want to provide you with a situational update to give you a better idea of what's going on in the western region of Wisconsin right now, the state as a whole, and to share with you what public health is doing now and what we really need to work on in over the next couple of months to really set that strong foundation for badger bounce back. Okay, so a quick situational update. So Pierce will go first. So we have, as of this afternoon, 13 confirmed cases, and that is the total that we've ever had confirmed in Pierce County, and we currently only have four active cases, which means these people are still isolated as infectious. We have six probable cases in the county, which are people that were close contacts of people who were infected but were unable to get tested, especially in the early days when tests were very limited. And none of those people are currently active. They've all recovered from their illness. So as you all know, on March 9th, Pierce County received the second only confirmed positive case in the state of Wisconsin. I did not think we were going to go second in the state. I thought for sure it would be a bigger county, but in a weird way, I'm really glad we did because it forced us to really get ready for what was next. I'm sure you also saw in the news last month that Pierce County Public Health had to take some pretty aggressive and swift measures to halt a cluster that was developing in Ellsworth. And I think that that was a fantastic example of public health working quickly and efficiently with our partners in law enforcement, the school, and municipal government to identify and halt a cluster using public health data as soon as possible. Kelly, I'll let you give the update for St. Croix.
Sure, so I had this presentation last evening when we had 35 confirmed cases in St. Croix County. That has already changed today. We do have 36 confirmed cases in St. Croix County. Of those 19 are still what we consider infectious, like AZ alluded to. We define probable cases as cases who are in close contact or live with a confirmed case that are symptomatic, and we have 21 probable of those. I'm sorry, we have 22 probable of those. Of those 22 probable, 17 of those have recovered. And we are keeping track of how many contacts we make. So contact tracing involves an initial interview with a person who has tested positive, and then we go, we do what you hear in the media, what is called contact tracing. So we identify high and medium risk contacts of all those confirmed cases, and we've had 285 of those in St. Croix County. So we've been very busy. Just a really quick note, we got really excited and right away off the bat, January 27th, we had a person who lived in our county who had returned home from Wuhan, China. The person isolated with us and took all the precautions and monitored for symptoms for 14 days. So right before, well, a month and a half before this really got crazy and broke loose, we were preparing for this. And I think, yeah, exactly what AZ said, we kind of got in a situation where they're going to start coming and we're going to identify cases, and we got an early head start on that.
Did, we did, Kelly. So next, Kelly's going to take you through a little bit about what public health core responsibilities are during an outbreak.
Yeah, so all of you should feel fortunate on the call. You are living in an area where you have two accredited health departments. Both Pierce and St. Croix Counties are nationally accredited health departments. And this, so this is a high-level overview, a little bit about what accreditation means for local health departments. What you see here in front of you are public health core functions, and we have specified in an outbreak, but this is all the work we do, not related to an outbreak too. So these are all the responsibilities that we have, and we do this in various ways. And in fact, I would say the two, so the accreditation, public health accreditation is devised in 12 domains, and the only domains you don't see here are domains 11 and 12. And 11 represents management, and 12 represents the board, such as yourself. Yeah, obviously not the Board of Health, but definitely a governing board in our jurisdiction. AZ, do you want to touch on any of these specifically?
Yeah, well, thanks, Kelly. So yes, it's kind of amazing to me that small health departments in Wisconsin like ours are able to do all 10 of these things really competently during an outbreak, and we do that because we practice. We are the two jurisdictions in western Wisconsin that are city readiness initiative jurisdictions as part of the Twin Cities area. So we get to practice for emergencies, I would say, more than most Wisconsin jurisdictions. But just to give you an idea of some of the things we do every day, so we are working every day as epidemiologists to monitor and assess the epidemiology of COVID-19, specifically in the western region. As Kelly mentioned, we diagnose and investigate COVID-19. If you follow us on Facebook, you'll see that we do a lot around educating and empowering residents of our counties to make healthy decisions. We assist in developing policies. So there's been a lot of conversation around local health officer orders, which are policies. We do enforcement, specifically under 252 state statute, which Kelly will talk about on the next slide. We do a lot of linking to care in our work in an outbreak, especially in those days when it was really hard to get your hands on a COVID test, even if you had an established provider. So we did a lot of care coordination. We still do a lot of care coordination with people that are sick, may have been exposed, but have a hard time getting access. We do a lot to ensure a competent workforce in our counties, and we do that both within our health departments, but we also do that with our hospital staff, our clinic staff, and our long-term care facility staff. We also work really hard on keeping up to date with the latest research and news coming out of CDC and DHS and WHO to make sure that we are keeping updated on the most recent scientific knowledge about COVID-19, which changes almost every day.
Okay, so you, oh, I got a little echo there, sorry. Roles of the local health officer in communicable disease control. I sometimes joke with students. I love students because they're our future, and not a lot of nurses know about public health because they don't get it through their education. So I always like to remind nursing students, the one great thing about local public health is we're written into statutes. So it's at some point job security, but it's also just a whole variety of nursing that we really take for granted, and people don't always know what we do, and we don't always do the best job of telling people. So some of the duties that the local health officer has specifically under state statutes, Chapter 252, it governs the communicable disease. So that's what it looks, some of the key points of 252 are define the powers and the duties of the department, which is often considered the state health department, and I think that is why you're seeing a lot of confusion about, you know, litigation and things going on right now. It's unfortunately the world we're living in. We also do have capacity to authorize fines. I like to come from a standpoint where we always like to lead with voluntary compliance. We want to work with people because public health is really about education and meeting people, getting people to a spot where they can understand the methods or understand the reasoning behind some of the methods we use. So we have these things called administrative rules that are not in state statute, but that's what they are, they're administrative rules. You guys probably could teach me up on that and articulate this better than I, but administrative rule 145 really talks about reporting of communicable diseases, and it is very detailed about who needs to report to public health. A lot of it is focused on hospitals, clinics, schools, veterinarian office. There's a lot of language related, who should be reporting to public health, and I think we've seen through this COVID-19 response that we have some work to do with that river. The river tends to complicate things as far as cross-state lines and reporting of diseases. So we're working through it, and we're making communication, I would say, almost weekly with our Department of Health at the state level, as well as calls to local health departments on the other side of the river, as well as MDH. MDH, so duties, just some high points for what local health officers shall do. Promptly take all measures necessary to prevent, suppress, and control communicable diseases. We must, reasonably necessary for the prevention and suppression of diseases. We do, we are able to say, no, we cannot have people gathering with X number of people under a written local order. And then if the local authority fails, DHS shall take charge. Anything else there, AZ?
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, that's a really good overview. I will say that being next to Minnesota does create some confusion because Minnesota authority for communicable diseases really lies with the state health department, and they're a centralized public health system. So their local health departments really only step in to assist with contact tracing if the state becomes overwhelmed. With us, it's the opposite. Communicable disease control is really a local responsibility. Okay, so this is a table from Prevent Epidemics, which is an initiative led by Dr. Tom Frieden, who is a former CDC director. And he developed this table to kind of explain to people what some of the key triggers are for community or state to decide whether or not they are really prepared to reopen. And so the things that I have highlighted and read are things that I, as a local health officer, am concerned about, specifically for Pierce, but also in the western region. So for epidemiological considerations, we need to see a decrease in cases in the context of testing that meets a minimum level for disease control. So we don't believe, and we're working with the state to decide what model that we're going to use to decide what that minimum level for disease control is, but we don't think we've met that threshold yet. The latest state modeling is looking like Pierce County and St. Croix County are testing at somewhere between 20 and 30% of what is needed to meet that minimum disease control level. Now, we have come a very long way in the last couple of months. Even though we haven't met that minimum level for disease control, we are not seeing a decrease in cases. So that tells us something pretty important. Additionally, we want to see decreasing healthcare worker infections, and we are not. So several of our recent cases on both sides of the county border have been healthcare workers, and that is, of course, very concerning to us. We do not want outbreaks in healthcare facilities. Under healthcare, we need to assure that there are sufficient PPE for all staff for two weeks, even if the current census doubled. We've gotten a lot better with some of the issues around face masks through some of the things that FEMA and DHS has been doing around procuring some of that PPE, but there's some PPE that we're really short on. So for example, disposable surgical gowns continue to be a real problem, and I would say that most facilities don't feel comfortable saying that if they had a COVID patient in their long-term care facility, they would have enough PPE for the next two weeks. So that is something that's definitely concerning to us. On the public health capacity side, we need to be able to contact 100% of symptomatic contacts and others with symptoms and make sure that they undergo testing within 12 hours of symptom identification. I would say we're close to being able to meet this for most Pierce County residents. It is a little bit tougher for those that don't have established doctors or don't have insurance, or maybe live in very rural communities without great access. So this is something we continue to need to work on as a public health. We need to have enough hand sanitizer to place at entrances strategically throughout buildings that are going to be open. Hand sanitizer is definitely getting better as far as the supply chain, but we still do hear from businesses quite frequently that maybe they found some hand sanitizer that was available, but it wasn't an adequate supply, or the prices were kind of out of control. So that's something a lot of local businesses in Pierce County and St. Croix County have stepped up to kind of change their business model to supply hand sanitizer, and I'm very grateful for those efforts. We need to make sure that there are designated facilities for non-hospitalized COVID-infected patients who can't isolate at home to safely isolate elsewhere. We have been in conversations with several potential partners to stand up for quarantine and isolation sites. We haven't gotten all the way there yet, but that is something we're going to need to sustain likely for the next 18 months to two years. So these are the real areas, when I look at these criteria, that I am still concerned about as a health officer. Kelly, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, just a quick mention of PPE. We get daily inquiries from long-term care facilities, dentist office, about PPE. Our St. Croix County Emergency Manager, Natasha Cardinal, has been so gracious to take over PPE and manage that from a county standpoint and manage all those requests. We did that at the beginning before the Wisconsin Emergency Management or the State EOC opened, the Emergency Operations Center. So she's really helping us through that, but I would say that is definitely something that really concerns me.
Thanks, Kelly. So metrics, so I'm an epidemiologist. I love talking about data. I'm going to be honest, this chart to the left doesn't make me a very happy person. We still are really unsure about some of the details about how state is measuring some of these metrics and really pushing them to answer some of our questions about that. So the first two, that relates to syndromic surveillance that we do via Essence. So basically, what that is, is we look for the symptoms that patients are having in emergency rooms and hospitals. I don't know what the difference is between symptoms of influenza-like illness and symptoms of COVID-like syndromic surveillance, and state has not answered that question. So I'm hoping that they're going to do that soon. For cases, we do want a downward trajectory of positive cases, yes, but I would argue that the percent of total tests for positives is not a very useful metric if your percent of tests is varying wildly all of the time. And so I think that's a challenging measure to communicate to the public, and I'm not sure it's going to be very useful. The hospital numbers, I think, are okay, but they don't really take regionality into account. These are for Wisconsin as a whole. So what Kelly and I have provided to you on the left, excuse me, on the right, is the Twin Cities area surge capacity, because that's the hospital regionality that we are most closely tied to. Most of the hospital systems in Pierce County, St. Croix, or excuse me, St. Croix County, Pierce County doesn't have any hospitals, are tied to Minnesota system. So I will say, don't get freaked out that there are some ones on the top that are in yellow. I would say even during the bluest sky days, we have some yellow on this chart. The good news is that you'll see that your 24-hour and 72-hour surge ICU capacity is at 100%, which means that Twin Cities hospitals, by and large, have not dipped into their ICU capacity. It's great news. And healthcare, so again, we want to see a downward trend in COVID-19 cases among healthcare workers weekly, which we are currently not seeing. So I'll talk a little bit more on my last slide about what we need to do as far as data over the next couple of months. So I think if there is a most important slide that I'm going to share with you today, this is probably it. So this is again from Preventing Epidemics, from Dr. Tom Friedman's work, and this shows you what I believe is probably the most accurate representation of what we are going to face as a community from now until the time where we have vaccinated 80-plus percent of our population for COVID-19. So it's hard to tell, you can't tell really where you are on a curve until you're looking backwards. So don't ask me exactly where on the big curve we are right now, because the answer is I don't know, and I won't know until it's behind me. But we have had a couple promising days of decreased positives coming in from the state. So today, I think we are at 193 positives, which is quite low for what we've been seeing over the last couple of weeks. So I do believe, and I think that this is borne out by historical studies of other epidemics, that after we loosen social distancing and some of our other public health mitigation measures, we will see smaller subsequent spikes. These spikes will happen locally and regionally, and that's why I believe it is very, very important that we have good local data and that we are making local decisions, or at least regional decisions, about measures to tighten our mitigation strategies as these peaks are starting to occur. Okay, so this is an accurate, objective list of what Pierce County, and I would say very closely, St. Croix is mirroring this as well, for what we are working on during the months of May and June to really set that strong foundation for our communities to reopen. So our overall operational goal over the next month and a half is really to prepare all sectors of our community to reopen safely, responsibly, and confidently with our most vulnerable populations in mind. Kelly and I really try to do our planning around health equity, which to us means considering the poorest, most resource lacking families in our county and answer to ourselves, how are we going to support them? Because the strategies that we put in place to support them will likely lift everybody up. So objective one is, it is my goal, and I think this is the most important metric, rather than any percentage of the population is, and we assure that all Pierce County residents have access to a COVID-19 test if symptoms develop. And so Kelly and I, as I mentioned, are still doing a lot of case coordination for people that are sick, that can't get access to testing for one reason or another. I want to see that eliminated. I want to see no one calling the health departments anymore, saying, I have a horrible fever, horrible cough, I can't get tested. And we are working really closely with our local healthcare providers to scale up their ability to do these tests. The National Guard was a lovely event. It was great. We're so lucky to have them. That is not a sustainable solution. We need to be raising up and building up our local healthcare capacity to do this. The second objective is really around tracing. We need to make sure that we have strong public health infrastructure so that all high and medium risk contacts of cases are contacted within 24 hours and are safely able to isolate and quarantine if they can't do that at home. As far as data, and I've already expressed my frustrations around data, but we have to make sure that we are identifying meaningful metrics that are really based locally and regionally that help us guide decision-making and resource allocation. For healthcare, as I've mentioned, Kelly and I have been working very closely with our healthcare partners to make sure that we're filling those gaps than inhibit COVID-19 care and testing. We have weekly calls with our EMS agencies, our long-term care facilities, our assisted living facilities. We have weekly calls with our infection preventionists at all the clinics and hospitals to identify gaps that they're facing and really work together with them to figure out creative solutions and locate resources to fill those gaps. For partners, we want to ensure that every service organization has practices in place to reopen in a way that minimizes risk to both staff and clients. So I work very closely, and I know Kelly does too. I have weekly calls with schools, my social service agencies, law enforcement agencies, the libraries, to give them a space to talk to each other about what they're doing around COVID-19, but also to get their questions answered by public health. And I think that that space is really important because they want to make sure that they're getting reliable information. And then, very importantly, of businesses, we want to ensure that every business is confident in the practices that they've put in place to reopen in a way that minimizes risk to both staff and their customers. So some of you may be familiar with the Pierce County Business Toolkit that we've put together. It contains a number of checklists in there for reopening, as well as some sample policies and procedures and education materials for businesses to take a look at so they can start to think around how they want to change their business models or their policies around reopening, as well as giving them a one-stop-shop access to Pierce County Health Department. There's a special email address and hotline that has been just set up for businesses, and I know St. Croix County, especially their sanitarian team, their environmental health team, is really on the front lines of working with businesses, and we work closely together to make sure that we're giving very similar guidance. Kelly, was there anything else on that?
No. I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. So the testing event on Friday and Saturday this week, so it went very well. Our partners were varied and many, and we could not have done it without the city of River Falls. Thank you so much, Chief Young, Jason Dodd, for facilitating use of the St. Croix Valley Innovation Center. It was the perfect space to do this testing event. Thank you for providing reserve officers as well. We tested 229 people in the Baldwin site and 184 people in the River Falls site. We have not yet received all of the test results for either of the sites, so we are holding to give more information about the results. But I will say that both counties have received positives as a result of these testing events. Kelly, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, other than I see a typo that I made.
Kelly, okay. We'll forgive you, okay. So I talk a lot about testing, and testing is very important. It is only part of the solution, but we are ready next week to roll out a version of what you see here to assist with making sure that patients can get access to tests, whether or not they're a patient of record, or if they have an established doctor. So we've listed all of our local healthcare organizations here who have the potential capacity to test. We've listed who they will test. Some are testing new patients and some are not. We outline whether or not they will need a screening or an actual e-visit in order to get tested, and then we have all the best phone numbers all in one place that we verified with each of the providers to say, this is the right phone number that you should call. We are waiting to confirm some, a couple last details with some of the providers before we start posting this on our website, but I think this will be hopefully helpful to people that are looking to get tested. Okay, so what happens next? So So Kelly and I need to continue working with the state to develop a very specific plan to help us move from safer at home and through the badger bounce back phases using risk-based strategies. So we need to make sure that we are looking at the best, most reliable evidence in respiratory infections and public health to decide what can open when. And we need to make sure that we're communicating our logic to the public so that they understand why we're making the decisions that we are. We need to communicate with stakeholders like you and the public the high likelihood of multiple peaks following badger bounce back. We want to make sure that municipalities and county leadership are ready to deal with those spikes as they occur, because they will occur. We need to advocate for more detailed travel recommendations within each phase. This is probably, if not the first, maybe the second most common question I get asked about badger bounce back and safer at home, is that travel is a bit ill-defined. And so that is something we're advocating with the state to be more clear about in the future. As I've mentioned before, we really need a regional lens for taking public health actions, rather than just state lens, especially when we need to tighten due to a local peak that we've identified. And then we, and I feel like I'm beating a dead horse with this one, but we need to work with the state to develop meaningful local metrics, including measuring local capacity. So one of the things that those beautiful metrics that the state came out with, in that red, yellow, green item, don't really take into account what local public health structure capacity is. And I would argue, maybe don't dig deep enough into what local hospital capacity is either. And so that is something that we, as a Western region, have banded together and made very specific recommendations to the state about. Kelly, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, the only thing I would add is that we are on... Oh, I'm getting bad feedback. Are you guys hearing that?
No.
The only thing, okay. The only other thing I would add is that we are on daily health officer calls, sometimes twice daily. So we are talking with what's going on in other counties. AZ did mention that we do want to have some consistency as things start to reopen. So, you know, one, if one thing's flying in Dunn County, could it likely, and should it be likely, flying in the regional? I think that's very important to us. We see a lot of barriers that could cause all kinds of unintended consequences if we don't have some consistency. So please know that those conversations are happening daily. And like AZ said, we are working and encouraging, advocating for people at the local level to get back to work. We do know that, you know, your economic status is definitely a factor of good health. And we know this is an unbelievable time for our economy. And, you know, we want to do it safely, and I think that's our bottom line. We need to be safe and careful and strategic.
Okay, so that's it from public health.
Mayor, I think if you want to offer the council the opportunity to ask questions of the guests, you can probably do that now before we get into staff presentation and other areas.
Yeah. Sorry, I was, I couldn't, I was muted. So, yeah, go ahead with questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for AZ.
Yeah.
Could you describe what the contact tracing is and how it's done for people watching today?
Sure. I love contact tracing, and so does Kelly. So contact tracing is an art as much it is a science, I will say. So contact tracing starts when we have identified a positive case. So when we do, we reach them as soon as possible, even if that means me going to find them at nine o'clock at night, garbed up in PPE at their house because they weren't answering their phone. And we do a very detailed interview to understand all of their movements in the 14 days before they became symptomatic, to understand first where they may have contracted the virus, and then do a very detailed interview for the two days before they became symptomatic, so we can understand everyone who they may have come in close contact with, who may have become infected. This is an iterative process, because sometimes I am the person who is telling them that they have tested positive for COVID-19. And some people really take that in stride, and some people, it really scares them. And so we sometimes have to do multiple interviews to get all of the information over a day or two. Once we get all that information, the, and it's often multiple people listening to these phone calls with the case, while one public health nurse is going through all the questions. We then sit down and go over the list of names and contacts that they've given us. And based on the information that the case gave us about the length of interaction and nature of interaction, we assign risk levels to all of those people. So we either decide they're low risk, they're medium risk, or they're high risk. Once we do that, we reach out to all of the medium and high-risk folks. And we tell the high-risk folks, we first ask, "Are you sick? Did you become ill?" And if they did become ill, then we treat them as a probable case, or we send them in to get tested if we feel that that's needed and prudent. We isolate them if they are sick, as well as isolating the case, obviously. If they're higher medium risk and they are not ill, we quarantine them, and we tell them, "You really need to stay home for 14 days." Pierce County formally isolates high-risk quarantined individuals. We do not formally quarantine medium risk. We give them the guidance that they really do need to stay home. And once we do that, for high-risk people and cases, we electronically or by phone monitor their symptoms twice a day, every day. We do case management for those people that are formally quarantined or isolated to make sure that they are getting groceries, that they have someone to talk to, that all of their social and physical needs are being met. For medium-risk people, we call, we follow up with them a couple times during those 14 days, make sure that they don't become symptomatic. And then we check, we have a final check-in with them after 14 days to be sure that they never got sick and don't have any questions. We also do a lot of work with community locations, especially employers, where exposure may have occurred. So if the person was working either during the time that we believe they contracted the illness, and we have no idea where it really came from, and we think it's possible it came from work, we have conversations with the employer about that. But we also have detailed conversations with employers if we think that someone was working during their infection period, which is two days before they get sick, all the way until they've been asymptomatic for three days, and at least 10 days have elapsed since their first symptom. So, yeah, Kelly, did I miss anything about contact tracing?
You covered it for my introduction. My introduction at the beginning was not as detailed. So yes, I think you did a great job.
And I like, it's different, because some people want to talk your ear off about everything they've done, and they've got super good memories, they pull out their notebook. I recently was doing a contact trace for a teenager who, the only way she could remember what she did day-to-day was going back through the history of her text messages and her Snapchats, which that worked, but every contact tracing is kind of an adventure.
So AZ, this is Olomanganya. How is it handled when, on that contact tracing? How is it handled when maybe you reach out to some of those higher-medium folks that have been in contact with somebody that you know has tested positive, and they just don't want to talk to you, they don't want to comply? They're really not interested in the whole thing? I've actually reached, had a few people reach out to me regarding that scenario, right? That they wouldn't necessarily be in favor of it. So how do you guys handle that?
That's a great question. So for high-risk contacts, I would utilize my authority under 252. Well, first of all, we would try, we do good cop, bad cop. My public health nurse, Diane, is good cop. AZ is bad cop. So Diane comes in, and she's very motherly, and she's got that nursing personality, and she really tries to convince them. But if that doesn't work, I come in and say, "Listen, we've tried to work with you. I'm going to issue an administrative order, and I'm going to then get a court order for you to be quarantined or isolated against your will. If you break this order, I will place quarantine guards outside of your house." Pierce County has never had to do that. Everyone has been so cooperative. For medium-risk contacts, I likely wouldn't use my authority and my resources to involuntarily quarantine or isolate them, just because the risk level is lower. But I would do everything I could to form a relationship with them during their incubation period to at least be able to check in with them on day 14 and assure that they didn't get ill. But everyone in Pierce County has been incredibly kind and cooperative with public health.
So to piggyback that question, if I may, what if the gov, what if the Supreme Court comes back and orders the governor's order unconstitutional? What authority does the county have at that point?
More!
I am, I am not a lawyer. I should start out with that. Not a lawyer, never wanted to be a lawyer, really hate reading state statutes. But early indications, based on what the legislature has written, indicate that local health officer authority would likely remain intact. And I want to make it clear that local health officer authority under 252 is completely divorced from the governor's emergency powers. So this is something that Kelly and I can use every day if we have a tuberculosis case in our county that we do use, that is really separate from the governor's order.
So Barron County Sheriff, as you know, came out and said that he's not going to have, put any money or any enforcement out for any violations. If something that, not saying that's going to happen locally, but if something like that happened locally, how would you, as a county officer, go about enforcing if the police or the sheriff or the local governments chose not to go along with what the health officers were saying?
I'm going to ask chief for a squad car and a taser. I've got some tickets in my pocket. No, I'm just kidding. Um, so I do, I could ticket people and give them citations. And all that, of course, is dependent on your district attorney being willing to prosecute those. And so you're right, it's something that public health definitely cannot enforce on our own. We need buy-in from our district attorneys, from our law enforcement officers, from the public, actually make complaints. So it's, it's really a systems effort and not something that public health can do on our own at all. And I would also invite Chief Young to speak to that as well.
I have a question, if I could. This is Scott Moore Sett. If we could go back real quick to the, to the, to each county, I think the numbers that were posted, AZ, you said there was 13 cases and four were active. So with 13 people test positive, but four are currently active and quarantining, is that what that means?
So that means that four people are currently isolated and infectious, so they have not been released from isolation. The rest have recovered, and they have been released from isolation.
So of those four, do we have, are they, are they spread out across the county? Are they concentrated in any one spot? Are they family members? Or can you, can you talk a little bit about where those four are?
Sure. So, I don't want to give too much information, because we've agreed as a Western region that we won't be releasing municipal-level data unless there's a public health reason to do so. So I will say that the four cases are spread out throughout the county.
Okay.
Two of the cases are linked to each other, and the other two cases are linked to each other.
Okay, okay. Good, thank you. And then I would have the same question for Kelly, for St. Croix County. Are they, the 19, are they fairly well dispersed throughout the county, or are they concentrated?
I would say, so we do have a couple of little things going on in two different communities. But otherwise, they're really spread out throughout St. Croix County. And when I say a little bit of something going on, we have had a recent little cluster, I guess, if you will, of about four of those 19 are concentrated in one area.
You know, I also want to emphasize, this changes every day. You might ask us this question tomorrow morning, and we might say, "My lord, there's a cluster in Spring Valley." And I want you to know that I, although we don't release this information publicly, I communicate, and Kelly communicates with our municipalities when we think that there's an issue in a municipality.
And I understand, and I appreciate that. And it, the disparity between the two counties kind of leads me to my next question. I mean, we're very fortunate to have two clearly competent public health people. I am a little concerned, and maybe this is a question more for staff, but I'm a little concerned that we have two health people, and that as we progress down the road, we could easily find ourselves, because we have sort of two masters, so to speak, we could find a situation in Pierce County where we may not have as many, as much risk as we do in St. Croix County, and we're going to become torn between the two. And so I guess that's, that's my biggest concern, is that while we certainly appreciate both, both public health officers, I'm just wondering if it doesn't make sense for us to take a closer look at figuring out, you know, i-if, if because of St. Croix County's higher numbers, the county ends up with a, with a different order than, than in Pierce County, you know, we could have a real, a real, a real conflict in the city of River Falls.
Yeah, so, no, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Scott. I just think AZ and I, I mean, we are really, I would say we're almost tied. That would go against social distancing measures. But we are communicating constantly, and I think I alluded to, we really don't want to divide communities between county lines. And that's why I feel it's so important that we do keep communicating, "Well, what's your order going to look like? What's your order going to look like?" I totally appreciate your question, and I think it is a fair one. But I also want you guys to be reassured. I don't think, we haven't yet in this response, go in two totally different directions, and I don't foresee that happening in the future. Now, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think we're pretty in sync, AZ.
Yeah, so what I will say is, it's, it would be unusual for a cluster of cases in St. Croix County not to impact Pierce County as well. I mean, every cluster I've identified in Pierce has had implications for Dunn, or Pepin, or St. Croix, or Minnesota. And so it's, I would, I would also add, until very recently, the rate of cases per population in Pierce and St. Croix have been almost exactly the same. So St. Croix County is likely to always have more cases, because they have almost twice the population of Pierce. In the last week, I would say, St. Croix has outpaced us as far as our rate. But that is a, that's a fairly recent development.
And I understand that, and I think you're hitting on exactly the point I'm trying to make, is that the needs of St. Croix County are going to be clearly, as we go down the road, to me, could be very clearly different from those of Pierce County. And then, and then we have to decide, you know, if we're, if we're taking a regional approach, which is the one I would appreciate, we took from a state level. But if we have to go by state by state, or I'm sorry, county by county, we've now got, we've now got a real conflict of, of, you know, which order, and who do we, how do we do that? And I'm not sure, again, we're very fortunate to have both of you, and you both have been great support to the city. I just have, I just have real concerns about having two, two, two different, potentially, a split in the road where we're, we're going to be having to decide it at that point, rather than maybe having this conversation or finding a solution now. And maybe there's no answer right this second, but I think it's something, I guess I'd like to hear the rest of the council's thoughts on that, and/or hear from staff what they think, or... I guess I'll stop talking and let others talk.
Thank you. Todd Beer stood here, and I, I had the same questions that Scott has brought up here. And so maybe, and if I'm... And so maybe, and, and if I'm correct, uh, or tell me if I'm correct in, in that seeing that eighteen month, uh, kind of loosening and tightening chart, uh, does that, is that statewide or is that nationwide? Uh, but nonetheless, I guess my question in all of this is what does regional mean? And I think that's the same thing Scott is asking. Does that mean Pierce and St. Croix or does that mean between here and Eau Claire? Does that, what does that mean?
So the, to, it's, I wish I could answer this question simply, but, um, local health departments divide up into regions and we are part of the formal Western region, which I believe is seventeen counties and two tribes. But I will say that because our region includes cities like Eau Claire and La Crosse, it is unlikely that all of us in the Western region would be able to agree on the exact same orders. So I think there are several aspects to regional being, yes, the seventeen counties, we coordinate very closely together and the two tribes. Um, I would say more locally, the ones that, um, are very similar demographically are Polk, Pierce, St. Croix, Pepin and Dunn. And we would probably coordinate the closest to make sure our orders are similar. Kelly, does that, does that line up with what you were thinking as well?
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe with the, um, addition of Barron, yeah, I, we just, I wish we could have a better answer for this. Um, it's just, right now it's really tough. But then we also have to think about our corporation councils and what they can do and then what all of our, um, adjoining law enforcement resources are and what they have, you know, comfort and, um, willingness to help us enforce if it get to that point, so.
Alderman Gania, one, one follow-up question that I have. I've been unmuted. There we go. I hear from a lot of people, um, recently and, and you hear a lot of it in the news too, but I, I've been getting people sending me emails and text messages, um, regarding why did the big box stores get to remain open? And I know some of these stores, um, have essential workers and essential products that we might need. But you get a ton of people in these stores and if their occupancy is twenty-five or fifty percent and they can have this many people, why can't our local businesses do the same thing and be under the same protocols of face masks and hand washing, which they're doing already? And they're probably a little bit more intimate than the big box stores potentially, because they don't want to get sick, right? But they also have a livelihood. I mean, can you give some perspective on that, maybe on a local level, not necessarily a governor level?
Kelly, I'll give you this one.
Okay. Um, well, I think it's a, it's a great question. I've had that question as well. Um, I think it's interesting as to, you know, um, what, what can be, what is deemed essential? That was the big question right away. What's essential, what's not? I think the fact that, um, you know, some of these big box stores do carry essential items allows them for, um, uh, allows them more access into their stores and opportunities. So your question is really, um, in a couple of different parts. Um, it's, it is unfortunate that they, the big box stores have potentially reaped more benefits um, and are maybe at an economic advantage than some of these smaller businesses. And I mean, I hate to say this is, this is kind of corny, but my heart goes out to the small businesses because they are seeing those, um, that, that gap. Um, as far as small spaces and big spaces and getting people together in those places, um, that's a tough one. I think that some of the big box stores have done a really good job. Um, and my local Walmart, although I hate to even go in there, but you know, sometimes your husband won't go. Um, you have to, they're doing a good job at tallying numbers and tallying the people who goes in, which I think as we move into reopening, we do need to have some good guidance. And I know the toolkit AZ put out for her businesses, um, she's way ahead of us. We haven't even done that yet because we're swimming in cases. It, it's really hard, uh, to give you a local perspective, other than my heart does go out to the moms and pops and small businesses.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I was just going to add, Kelly, you know, I think we have to be very careful. And I have asked the state to do this too. Every time they make a decision, they need to explain the public health reasons behind the decision. And Kelly and I are, being transparent, are not clear on the public health decision uh, between making a, a, uh, between distinguishing, uh, uh, big box stores from smaller retail locations. But it sounds like, um, under the order that was released yesterday, I think it was thirty-six, there is some more room for smaller retail operations, which we were happy to see.
I guess that kind of begs another question. Where, where does the difference come in between retail and service, right? I mean, you got people going in and to a chiropractor location or a massage location. I get some of the chiropractor massages. I, I mean, I benefit from both of them monthly. Um, but, so those are open. You can go in, but you can't get your haircut. You can't go in and get all these other services that are essential. Um, you can't bring your dog to the vent unless the, the dog is on its bed, right? These are things that I, I think to me are an issue. I mean, if, if we're going to have it here, it really should be kind of equal in my mind. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think defining essential has been kind of the central conundrum of safer at home because my essential may not be your essential. Um, and people also associate a value judgment with being called essential or non-essential. No one wants to be called non-essential, right? Um, and that, that's hard to hear. Um, so I am hoping that through badger bounce back, we move away from splitting hairs about being essential and non-essential and really focus on, um, lifting up businesses to put best practices in place. Because I, and providing them the technical support they need to do so, because I don't expect that Olinalu Salon owner knows, um, necessarily the best infection prevention practices for droplet precautions. She shouldn't, that's not her job. Um, so I hope that public health role going forward, specifically with our environmental health specialists, can be, forget about a central versus non-essential, here's how we can help you operate, um, in a way that makes both your staff and customers safe.
Okay. Any more questions for AZ and Kelly? Kind, kind of, oh, yep, go ahead Diane, then I have, then I have one.
Ben Plunkett, uh, questions for both officers.
Hang on Diane.
As we're looking at the pathology of this disease, we're seeing both an initial death rate, uh, but we're also seeing some fairly significant indications of long-term health complications. I have seen a fair bit of public discussion about the death rate and how some people are willing to gamble with the lives of others in the community based on that low death rate. I haven't seen a lot of discussion about the heart, lung, kidney, neurological damage that is occurring among a significant portion of people that were initially either asymptomatic or low-risk patients that have contacted this disease. We're taking those long-term impacts to public health and people's quality of life into consideration as we're making these public health decisions. Thank you.
That's a, that's a great question and I really appreciate this question because early on, um, so my background is really, um, focused. I, I, I'm not as smart as AZ in her epidemiology and data pieces, but I really do take a focus in viruses and how they impact the body long-term. And I think the consequences, we do not even know what the consequences of even rates of cases are. I think there is good evidence that shows, um, you know, people, um, when they're put, when their body, um, contracts a new virus, those, um, immunology, um, impacts may trigger other complications that are long-term and don't show up for years later. Now, I'm not a doctor, but I do a fair amount of reading, so that's been one of my concerns from the get-go.
Sure, that's a great question. Um, so we realized there was a cluster, um, based on case investigation, based on contact tracing for one case when we called some of their close contacts and they were sick as well. And we did get some of them tested to confirm that this was, this was a multiple household cluster occurring in Ellsworth. Um, and we looked at, um, what the risk behaviors were that caused the families, um, the different families to contract COVID. And the risk factor simply was extended family continuing to go over to each other's homes, um, to visit, to have Sunday meals, to help grandpa in the garage. Um, so we put out a communication that was really specifically tailored to Ellsworth because one of the things I love about working in Ellsworth and Ellsworth is everyone here is related. Um, and so we put out a, a specific communication to say, please do not go over to each other's homes. This is not the time to stop by. No sleepovers, no Sunday dinners. Please, we know this is causing transmission of disease in your community. Um, and that got, we got more shares on Facebook for that post than I think we ever had before times ten. Um, because I think people really saw themselves and their family and their community in that communication. And we, we did halt it because we got people to stop going over to each other's houses for casual socialization. Because I think in small communities like Ellsworth, people think that they are immune. They're not Milwaukee, they're not Madison, they're not Minneapolis. It won't happen here. Um, and communicating to people that it is happening here and you, these are the steps you need to take was, was helpful.
Thank you.
You had a question?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, again to both officers. As we look at the numbers of just great mortality, not even considering the long-term health impacts that were discussed earlier, we have as many people dead in America from COVID nineteen in four weeks as we've had dead from intoxicated driving in four years. We know that masks significantly reduce the risk of transmission. We don't know to what degree that significance is. We don't have an exact percentage, but it is fairly extrapolatable from national data and international data that they reduce transmission significantly. As we look at our local businesses and their ability to return to normal operations and our abilities of our residents to return to their normal lives, would increasing the number of people that wear masks in our community and reducing the community spread of this disease allow an earlier return to normal operations? Thank you.
So that, that's a great question. And the short answer is yes. Um, masks are great source control. So that means they won't prevent you from contracting the virus if you're wearing a mask. But if you are pre-symptomatic, which means you're infected, um, but you're not yet symptomatic, or if you're asymptomatic, which means you're infected and you're infectious, but you are not, um, you're not displaying symptoms, it will prevent you, um, to some degree to be, uh, to be a source for infection. I am hesitant, um, to make orders around masks because the truth of the matter is that not everyone can safely wear masks due to health conditions. I'm also, um, cognizant of some of the social stigma around wearing masks or not wearing masks. Is it a recommendation? Absolutely. And do businesses and employers have the ability and the power to make rules around mask usage? Yes, and I think they should. I do think there needs to be, um, ways for people to be exempt um, in case they have a health condition that means that they can't safely wear a mask. Kelly, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
I just want to add that I, um, have a, um, connection with the Hudson Community Group. And we were talking about universal masking actually just today. Um, and they, I agree with AZ's thoughts related to orders around masks, really super hard to enforce. Um, there are health implications for other, you know, certain compromised people. Um, but I know you will see out of the St. Croix, St. Croix County Public Health Office, um, really reminders in the next week or so about how important, if you can wear a mask, a cloth mask, you should be wearing them when you are in public. So that is coming from us. Um, obviously no orders. It's a strong recommendation like AZ said.
Diane, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. Um, uh, we, despite the, um, you know, hearing about random acts of violence against people trying to enforce, um, public health measures, uh, across the country, um, there was also recently a survey that suggested that there's strong consensus on, on people that, um, that stay-at-home orders, orders are, um, uh, appropriate. Um, I, I was just wondering if you have, either of you have run into any opposition, um, in doing your work and, um, uh, you know, if so, or even if not, how we as a council, as a city can help you do your work?
AZ, do you want me to take that one? Because I, I feel pretty, uh, I'm, it's getting towards the end of the night and I'm just going to let her all go here.
You go ahead, Kelly.
Um, so we have had a little bit of, um, pushback from certain things, um, certain measures that we have put out, um, strictly in a sense that came from the, the goodness of our hearts and public health to keep people safe. And we are seeing opposition. And there are groups that say, you know, um, all kinds of nasty things about us. And I'm fine with that. I've been called a lot of things and I can handle it. Um, but just support from councils and health boards and county boards as supervisors to really say, I mean, this is a, this is like something we've never seen before. And we need good public health and we need to support good public health. And that may mean, um, you know, people don't like all these different, um, things they have to go to or being asked to do, go through or being asked to do. Um, yeah, I have seen opposition. Um, I think we've come to terms. I like to have a conversation and chat with people. Some has been on individual, some has been on social media. I ignore social media. Um, but to be frank, it's, it's, it's weighing on us for sure. AZ?
Yeah, and I, I've experienced some of the same things. Kelly, um, has, um, you know, there have been threats of violence, um, to my sheriff and to me and to Kelly. Um, I think that's really unfortunate, but something that Mayor Dan did that I just immensely appreciated was in one of his weekly updates. He reminded people that our municipal and county employees are members of our community. Our kids go to your schools, our husbands and wives work in local businesses. Um, we are doing what we truly know is best for our community. Um, and we suffer those same consequences too. Um, and so, um, I just really appreciate what the city has done to try to humanize the people that are making these decisions. Um, I do believe that the majority of people think we're doing the right thing and are appreciative. Unfortunately, some of the loudest people feel differently.
So does anybody else have anything for you or Kelly? I, I know it sounded like everybody's getting everything answered. I know Mr. Moore said it started a conversation about, the, the two, um, health officers we had. I don't know if that got, that kind of got waylaid. I don't know if you had any other questions about that or if anybody else has any other questions?
Uh, this is Alderman Watson. I, I mean, in, in regard to that, um, topic, what I've heard tonight, first of all, I've learned a lot tonight and I really appreciate you all, um, being on this workshop because, uh, and the fact that this is going to be, um, you know, out there um, on video. I think that, um, it make, it, I'm reassured that the two of you are working closely together and then basically you're on the same page that, um, that the city will not be kind of split in half by two different needs. that the city will not be kind of split in half by two different needs, uh, or, or orders. So, um, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm hopeful and, and also reassured at the same time that, uh, that, that, that you all are considering, uh, the city as an ally, you know? And, um, we need to know from you what you need from us. Um, and also, you know, I just encourage everybody listening to this, um, to this, uh, conversation, you know, to really take to heart, uh, what was just said about, you know, wearing face masks when we're out in pu- in public. I've been doing that and, um, and I know many, many other people have, but, um, many haven't. And I think that, um, that really is the next step, um, for us to be able to move forward as a community and get things rolling again. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, yep.
One last question. So if a business, um, locally, um, has folks that can, are test positive for COVID, what is the standard procedures for that business? Um, do they need to close down for so long? Is there a 14-day period, a one-day period? I mean, what does that look like if that person tested positive and then later they found out?
Yeah, so it really depends on the timeline for when they were last at work. So we had a case where, um, someone had tested positive for COVID, but they hadn't been in, by the time we identified them as positive, they hadn't been to work in five days. And at that point we said, do you think between shifts, you could do some deep cleaning and then continue on with your, with your shifts? And we've excluded all the people that were medium risk from the workplace. And they said, yep. And they did a deep cleaning based on some technical assistance that we gave them. Um, and we checked out the cleaning job and we said, great, you did an awesome job. Um, continue to monitor your workers for symptoms. Continue to make sure that those are medium risks who are excluded from 14 days since they last came in contact with the case. Um, that was pretty cut and dry. If we discover that a case has very recently been in the business and was infectious, um, and they were running all over the facility with their hands all over everything, we do sometimes advise businesses, listen, we think you do need to close for 24 hours to do a deep. So it really, it really depends on the situation.
And I just want to add to that from St. Croix County perspective. So we have had, um, a number of, um, cases test positive in local businesses of all different kinds of businesses. So it really depends on the business too and what their business is operating and what their focus is. Um, I will say businesses have been more than willing to say, hey, yeah, I'm calling corporate or I'm calling this person or I'm calling my supervisor and we'll do whatever you want. Um, and almost, um, doing things without even being asked, which has been completely a dream for us to work with in public health.
Um, this is Mr. Watson. I have one more question. Um, do you anticipate, um, sending out guidance or, or that there would be guidance for the state around, um, uh, uh, when, when, um, let's say office workers are coming back into a business that, that the business will need to, um, have a checklist of questions as to whether they can come back into that office environment or not on a daily basis and keep records for contact tracing and things like that?
Some of that is addressed in the Pierce County Business Toolkit. There's an office environment checklist that we are telling businesses to go through. And if they can't successfully check off everything on that list, we're advising them to call public health for assistance because we, we believe that everything on that checklist is really key. There are also policies in there about symptom monitoring of employees and a kind of screening, um, questionnaire that we want, um, them to be considering. So we don't know what the state guidance will be around office environments, but we have done, I feel, everything we can, we can to prepare businesses to think about what they need to have in place to make office environments safe.
So I know you, you guys put up, uh, a sheet of contacts and stuff like that. What's the best resources for folks if they have questions in both counties? What's the best way to get ahold of you guys and what would be the best resources for our businesses and our residents to reach out?
Am I allowed to type it in the chat box? I just don't want to break protocol because I already did once.
Kelly, if you want to give, if you want to just give the verbally and that'll help us with the open meetings. You're muted, sorry.
Try to be such a good virtual player here. K E L L I period. E as in Edward, N as in Nancy, G as in George, E as in Edward, N as in Nancy, at S C C, that's Charlie, two Charlies, W I dot gov. That's my email. And we also have a COVID hotline, but of course, um, I don't know the number, but it is on our, it's on our county website. Um, and you hit our health alert button and it takes it right to, um, those numbers. So if you haven't checked that out.
For, for Pierce County, we have a direct line for businesses and a direct email for businesses that go to my lead environmental health specialist. So the email address, and this is on the business toolkit, is covidbusinesshelp@co.pierce.wi.us. And the direct line to Brian Long, who's our environmental health specialist, is 715-273-6762. Um, we are asking members of the public with general COVID questions to please call 211. If they need something specific from public health, of course, they can call, call the public health mainline anytime.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, Kelly, AZ, greatly appreciate it, guys. Doing a great job.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks so much.
If you, if you guys are having trouble sleeping, you can stick around and listen more.
That wasn't very nice, Mayor.
Other, otherwise we're going to move on to the staff presentation on the COVID-19 response. God, are you going to take this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it. Um, it looks like John's giving me the ability to share, so I'm gonna pull a PowerPoint here. Um, is everybody okay with keep going or is, I guess that's, I should ask the mayor, are you okay with just keep going here?
Yeah, yeah.
Scott, this is John. You are the presenter now.
So you guys are used to a time limit on workshops. So now, now we can see what happens when you're, when it's wide open.
Usually workshops ain't this good though.
Of course, I'm trying to get to my PowerPoint here and it's.
That, that probably sounded wrong. They're good workshops, but there ain't, we don't have that many questions about it because you guys are doing such a great job.
Well, it's pretty, that's nice. It's pretty clear that, uh, Kelly and AZ are the most popular workshop ever. So that, by a long shot. Um, I'm act- actually having a challenge. You're getting my PowerPoint up. John, I don't know if, did Brant send you the PowerPoint as a backup?
No, I do not have it, but if Brant is still on, yes, Brant is still on. If he has it, he can.
It's trying to share, um, trying to share content instead of let me open, uh, let me, oh, I can, oh, I can do it. I can open PowerPoint and then share that. Sorry, everybody. Maybe I can.
In the interim, I'll say, John, nice hat.
Yeah, thanks. Yep. Needed a summer hat. I was wearing the stormy chromer for too long this spring and I needed a summer hat.
So I, if I did this right.
There you go. Looks good. Yep.
All right.
Nice.
So a- as an introduction, I guess we thought it would be important to have the public health officers. I should give credit to Jason Stroud who, who, um, advocated early when we were back in March, trying to figure out how we're going to schedule this out with the council and work through, um, elections and keep you informed that it was critically important to include the public health officers in this workshop. And despite, um, my initial skepticism of, uh, of that fact, because I thought, you know, staff can do what we always do is we'll just summarize for everybody and provide it. Uh, there's no question that, um, it was very helpful to have, um, them and they are super, super busy and not, I don't think, uh, gave you a, a full understanding of how busy they are. So for them to spend an hour and a half with us is, is pretty incredible. Um, I'm glad that they could do that. And I think this would be a good service to the public also, as, as Councilman Watson indicated. Um, hopefully what I can present also be some service to folks to, to provide some transparency in what we're doing. Um, there, there isn't any intent that council is going to act on anything, but we want to bring you up to speed on certain things. And then also provide an opportunity for you to ask questions about things that you think we should have been talking about um, in preparation of, of the next regular council meeting in which we'll have some, some action scheduled on, on some of these things we'll discuss tonight. Um, as you know, we, we issued the, um, River Falls Crushing COVID Plan. We've, we've issued a number of things previous to that. And certainly you've had, you've been privy to, um, at first daily updates and then sometimes, um, every couple day updates and so forth. So I, I believe that we've been providing good updates to the council, but we wanted to give, I, an opportunity as we introduced the weekly updates from the mayor via video um, to some background to, to what we're planning to do going forward. And I will admit that there are many answers to questions missing that people are very interested in. Um, some because we don't have the, the, uh, the answers. Um, others because we are, um, working on how to answer. So before we can even get to the answer, we're trying to figure out exactly what direction we go for that, the answer. Um, I thought the, uh, the public health officers provided a good overview and were very diplomatic and, um, and their treatment of their authority and role. Um, we are all bound, um, by the state of Wisconsin. And so there are things that we have to, to, frameworks we have to work within. And so we've been doing that as best we can. Um, even in the, in the clear lack of detail, um, in many of the plans that we've seen coming from the state, local government is, is in the role that we normally are, which is we've got some, some rough idea of what's happening. We can make some good guesses about how the behavior of the state is going to, going to happen because of their previous behavior. Um, but we are in a situation where we don't necessarily have, um, precedent to, to understand which direction the state is going to go because it's not something that has a lot of precedent. Um, so we are operating on the framework of the, uh, Governor Evers Bounce Back Plan. Um, that was put out on April 20th and has been amended, so to speak, over time. Um, that is the rough framework for, for how we're going to move, including the four phases. You've heard from the health officers, they're, they're interested in going to a regional approach, um, for some of the phasing. And certainly the, um, the city's plan would allow for that as the state kind of pulls back. And we do want to, um, as AZ talked about, come up with some specific data metrics um, that help us understand the phase to phase. And maybe if they don't help us move from phase to phase, they certainly provide some transparency to people who are, who have their feet firmly planted in River Falls, Wisconsin. They want to understand what it means for you when you're in River Falls, Wisconsin. It's difficult to read the Journal Sentinel, uh, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel or the, uh, Minneapolis, um, Star Tribune and understand what that means for, for people in River Falls. So to some extent, we're providing some of that localized, um, with our plan. Um, we drafted a guide and I think that's the best way to look at it, kind of how we're going to incorporate things. And we'll, we'll be referring to this as we go forward. As we're presented opportunities to make changes and adjustments based on what, what framework has changed at the state level and what is provided on the frameworks from the, the local health officers, then we will, um, work with that. I think you can, uh, see that there is an opportunity or a chance that, um, the state Badger Bounce Back Plan will be kind of melded or subsequently worked into Pierce, St. Croix County type plan or regional plans. But certainly there is no clarification from the state at this point, whether that, whether or not that's going to happen. Um, and so we'll, we'll wait and see. The court, the, and I should mention that I'm happy to take questions, but it's probably good if I move through the slides as best I can and then, um, can come back around to things, but, uh, certainly the count, the mayor and the council have the ability if you want to ask questions throughout, um, that's, that's your prerogative. So we are maintaining our focus and this is something that we identified early on in March. What is it that we need to focus on for five core functions, um, and providing services? So these are the five that we identified. Um, and then we organized early or reorganized early the, the complete organization of the city around these five areas. Um, first in some, uh, strike forces, so to speak, um, impromptu, um, groups, um, that were organized and the executive team of this, the city kind of then kept about some of their initial work and also worked on strategy. And now, of course, you understand we've realigned the entire, you know, org chart. And the executive team is all focused on these functional, um, five core functions. Um, some of the things that we want to understand about principles as we go forward is being adaptable in the face of change. Um, we do want to capitalize on opportunities for improvement. There's a number of, of places to make lemonade out of lemons, to learn more about our organization and our community and people's preferences for how to be served. At the end of the day, that's what we are as a local government and service organization. And so we certainly have some opportunity for, for preparing ourselves for the future based on what we're seeing today. We want to help remove barriers. There's a number of barriers to success, um, in moving through these types of events. And so where the city can remove barriers, bureaucratic, um, processes safely and logically, we want to do that. We want to align, collaborate and innovate with our partners. There's no, there's just simply no way that the city can get us through this alone. I think you heard that from the health officers. You'd hear that from law enforcement. You'd hear that from, um, um, public and private entities that to get through this, we're going to need to work together. So I want to talk a little bit about the Crushing COVID Plan. The plan is available on our website, um, and it will be modified from time to time. This week's, um, this week's. Share this now. This week's mayor's video, uh, introduced the idea that we'll provide some metrics to folks as we have them. At least localize some of the data that we have. In the following weeks, we're going to try to take, um, similar to what you saw in AZ's PowerPoint and on the state's website, um, a dashboard approach where we can kind of show people, are we red, yellow, green? What are the challenges facing us, um, to kind of move into more freedom, so to speak, or more ability to, um, to be towards the normal of what we've had in the past? So, um, that's, that's something that I think will help people understand, all right, the hill in front of us to climb is personal protective equipment for our local shops. That they don't, you know, they're not, they're not able to source sand or hand sanitizer masks and other things they need to safely open. So that's something we need to do. Um, or we don't have hospital capacity, um, related to some piece of equipment or something. And how would we, how would we go about, um, sourcing that out? So it kind of helps us understand what hills we're climbing and then work together for the people. Um, work together to climb that hill together. Um, specifically around the Pierce County and St. Croix County, the regional question, I'll try to provide some, some insight as to how we feel about it as staff and what discussions we've had with the mayor and others. We are unique. We know that from previous, um, things that we've had, kind of been in two counties. And we also know that the, there's a real connection to the Minneapolis-St. Paul metro area. Um, so that is the intent of the paragraph, you know, in that introduction. We talked about the national framework. We talked about having to work together. We indicate that, you know, local and statewide circumstances are going to guide us. Um, and, and River Falls is River Falls and we're in two counties. Um, and so there's going to be times where Milwaukee and Madison approaches are not adequate. And then there's going to be times where Madison and Milwaukee approaches are, um, inappropriate, maybe is the best way to say it. And then there's going to be times where Madison and Milwaukee approaches are inappropriate, maybe is the best way to say that. They're too much or they're they're overkill or they're not not rational, given. The local circumstances. So that really can go both ways. I think it's important for people to understand that that's. That's thought of in the plan. At the end of the day, though, even if we think statewide measure is inappropriate, because it's based more in Milwaukee or Madison. We have to first convince the state to to relent, so to speak, on it. So. There should be no misunderstanding that as your staff, we're not planning. Acts of wide civil disobedience against the state. Consider those things to be lawful and and those are acts that we have to continue to operate under. As those things are relaxed, or if we should go to a scenario where the local public health officers have more control. Then we certainly would work with them on what we think fits best for River Falls. Although meanwhile, we're advocating to those that will listen at the state. And local level, including the public health officers, what we think is best for the citizens of River Falls, given the circumstances that we've seen. On the ground. So it's a plus or minus the state framework. Our intent and the philosophy that's outlined in the plan is not to be a plus. So it's not meant. The default is not to add restrictions, regulations to what the state framework is. There may be some, there isn't the need for that currently, but there may be a time where there's some some specific outbreak or something related to our circumstances in Falls where that make makes sense. And I think the public health officers talked to that a little bit. Yeah. The. So the background on this is that we have made a number of changes. We have. We have a role both as a public organization. So we, there is some policymaking role that the city council has. And then obviously, we are an organization or an employer. So we have, we have some. Some decisions to make about the services and and that we're. We're providing to the public. And so we're keeping both of those roles in mind. And I've outlined some of the things that we've already done regarding facilities. Then we moved, the plan includes the Badger bounce back, which I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on because it's. It's the framework that's provided, although we can talk about any clarifications people are looking for and how the the local execution, but the primary. Job of the the crushing covert wants to provide. Insight into how the local execution is likely to proceed. Short of the city council or mayor directing otherwise. So that's where you all come in is to look at this plan and go, well, here's the direction we think we're headed in. That's not the direction we want to go. That is the direction we want to go. Or we're not exactly sure it's the direction we want to go in, but we're willing to wait a little bit and see how how it goes. So that's, that's kind of the role of the policy board. And and there'll be some direct actions. So. Certainly given broad power to the city administrator, the police chief and the mayor to act within. Kind of the box that you've placed us in for public health emergencies. So we can buy things and we can prep things, we can make plans, we can close facilities and some things like that. It always then again comes back to the council at the next meeting. And so you have the ability to take action on those and say, we don't want to do that. You'll also see our strategy on strategic initiatives, capital planning and budgets, and then you'll have some opportunity to act on those. So. The plan execution requires some actions by the council. It's not necessarily just a passive plan where if you don't do anything, we just keep trucking. There's going to be some things that you need to do related to. To the plan. PPE is still an issue. Although much, much improved from where we were only a few weeks ago. I think we will have some new challenges that are identified as more businesses are open. And they're starting to demand. Some of those resources. And so the the pie of PPE is getting split by more and more folks. And there'll be some equity issues about that. And so. The extent the city can avoid causing problems with equity in that, we'll do that. So we're not planning new rules on. Maximum price laws or other things on a local level. That's not something that that seems to be a good tool for us, but it's something we'll we'll monitor. I think at this point that that isn't in our tool bag and it's not something we're really contemplating as a local government. Because I don't think we have the size and scale to really make a big impact. We're just too small to expect that we can. Change the economy for PPE or something like that. And then we we do favor a regional approach. There's some language in our plan that that certainly emphasizes that we think that would make some sense. But is not necessarily allowed right now. So. We aren't planning to just. Kind of pretend that the state allows us to take a regional approach and make our own determination of individual. Things being open or closed. If the state has a statewide approach to a certain. Facility or makes a rule specifically for us, even if we don't think it makes sense for the region. We have an op, we have an obligation to to follow that. So there aren't a lot of examples that I can give you to try to help you understand what I'm talking about, but. You know, if there was a statewide rule on campgrounds that said you can't have campgrounds open. Even if our local public health people were telling us, well. In River Falls, the campground is is fine. You're safe to open. It wouldn't make sense in my mind for the city to just say, well, we're going to, we're going to blatantly ignore the state on this particular instance. So. Maybe not the best example, but but one that we have nonetheless. What we can as a city really control a lot is how we phase up things that are that are allowed. We are considered an essential service provider, so we have. Pretty wide authority to employ our employees and activities that we think are for the best health, safety, welfare of the city. There's not a lot of restrictions on, you know, how they choose their activities. Under the law. So that leaves us to kind of use our, like we always do, try to use our resources for the best best purposes forward. There's a lot of unknowns about the aquatic facilities, summer recreation. The library building itself. We tried to outline. If we get to phase one within a week or 10 days or whatever it may be. Here's what you can expect us to kind of move from one current state to a future state. And so for an example. You know, if we're sitting in June fifteenth and we're in phase one, well, we would, as a city, unless we have better information or other information, our plan would be to have the splash pad be open. And it would be signed, you know, used at your own risk. And we would ask that, you know, people try to self-police groups under 10. When you move to a phase two and it's June fifteenth, you know, meaning the weather is warm enough to have the splash pad open. Then it, then it may be open with no capacity restrictions. And and so what we try to do is kind of outline the playbook. What people really want is us to put a date at each of those phases. And that unfortunately, we're just not at a particular place that we can do that, given the the structure the state's put in place. Other than to say phase one appears. To be. You know, around Memorial Day. With this, the governor's current order. If there's a change at the court. And that comes, you know, the court were ruled tomorrow that. Safer at home is not valid. And the public, local public health officials said, yep, we're prepared. Or you think you got no problem going to phase one? Well, then then we would use the phase one column. And we would communicate that via the mayor so that the people in River Falls kind of understand where we're at, right? There's all kinds of voices. He doesn't have the independent authority to make all those decisions, but he does have the authority to to speak kind of for the organization and how we open things and. And then again, the council has some ability to act after the fact that they have some concerns. So. That's the intent of the municipal operations section. I just want to speak very. Briefly about communication strategy. We're going to continue to use the weekly updates, video updates from the mayor. I will continue to to provide two reports, written reports and council packets a month. We will continue to communicate all the formal resolutions passed by the council. So you will be communicating to the to the community, how how you understand. And we, we're going to focus on our official partners for so sources of information. So the city isn't going to be the fountain of all information related to COVID ever. But we will take a responsibility in trying to help Pierce and St. Croix Public Health and the Wisconsin Department of Public Health and the CDC. And FEMA. And other specific resources get their information out through our channels. Enforcement, you heard tonight, some strategy or philosophy on the part of the public health officers and their enforcement strategy. There's a clear understanding that there's a practical implementation challenge for enforcement. You always have to be willing to actually enforce things if you're going to. You're going to make rules around them. Our enforcement philosophy considers, as it always does, the constitution, the statutory framework, the legal advice from the city attorney. And others. Our primary enforcement strategy with the local law enforcement. Is voluntary compliance. And we're focusing in public spaces and places, which is our primary focus during all times, not just COVID times, but. Does that mean that you can do whatever you want on your private property in River Falls? No. And that was never the case. There's a whole framework of things that we've all agreed to as a society and a community and a city council even. That this is how we're, how, what kind of behavior is going to occur in River Falls. And so egregious. Regious violations on private property are still going to be approached with a voluntary. Approach. Somebody's having a party tonight with thirty five people. In their front yard. The police officer is not going to drive by, you know, the the police officer is going to stop. Go up to the the, find out who maybe the property owner is, like we would do on other parties and say, you know, are you where there's a small mortar? You know, this looks like it's probably not just your household. We would like you to voluntarily disperse, you know, this is not, this is not the case. If they were to refuse. Then the officer has the ability, like they always do, to use their judgment, talk to their sergeant. And determine if it's appropriate for them to refer charges for violation to the district attorney. And then the district attorney will take it from there. We don't have a local citation necessarily on the books that we'd be using for this. And so that that's, that's what the enforcement mechanism looks like. Keeping in mind that the River Falls Police Department is not the only agency that has some enforcement ability. Certainly, the public health officer has the ability to to ask the sheriff or other law enforcement agencies to to intervene. In a, in a public health. Case. So. That doesn't appear to be the philosophy adopted by the county. It's certainly not the philosophy adopted by the city. But that's, that's the. Discretionary authority is still with the police chief. Which trickles down to the officers and means that they have some judgment and discretion to handle things in the best way they can. But the police chief has provided them guidance on how how they would. How they would operate. Regarding the business community, we do believe we can have a positive impact on the business community. So we're not taking a hands off approach and saying, well. If we can just stay out of their way, everything will be fine. We're working directly with. Businesses, we kind of early on tried to help coordinate some chamber. Chamber resources, get them as much of the federal in information and money as possible. We will be committing to working with the River Falls Chamber on their recovery committee. We've changed parking. We've done proactive outreach to businesses. So we're tracking kind of health of businesses and trying to get an understanding of how we can help. And then we're, we're drafting up a local loan program that we can talk about a little bit here. The loan program will be presented at the May twenty sixth meeting. We intend to roll out some applications ahead of time. It will be based on the revolving loan. Fund that we have in place that the council has previously authorized. Will we be asking the council to increase the the authorized amount, I think, from the three hundred thousand that it's currently authorized. To either five or six hundred thousand. It would be either five or ten thousand dollar loans over a period of about four years. They would be, the underwriting would be. You know, current on your utility bill and a personal guarantee. The loans are intended to be limited to businesses with less than twenty five employees. So. That's the, that's the direct kind of loan program that the city is looking to do. We are not an entitlement community. And so you're probably seeing a good portion of press releases. From the top fifty cities and population across the state announcing their great new. Loan programs. They're being able to do that. All with federal, new federal money that they've received through the CDVG entitlement program. The city of River Falls is not one of those communities. We rely on the state. To to funnel CDVG monies. To to date, the state has indicated no plans to do that. They've indicated only a tepid ability to even discuss doing that for for non-entitlement communities. So we're doing our loan program with our own money, so to speak. What's the fiscal strategy? The fiscal strategy is that we need to rebalance the budget for twenty twenty whenever there's a revenue, you know. We like to balance our budget out. So if revenues are falling, we need to examine our expenditure. We've done hiring freeze. We're looking at all of the budget categories that we have for twenty twenty. And we're trying to make sure that we have ongoing liquidity and debt analysis taking, taking place on all of the funds that we're responsible for. And as you know, as council members. Different funds are in different condition based on different circumstances. So we have some funds in the city that are doing just fine. Like building permit funds for community development, because development is continuing to to go quick. And then we have some funds that have seen revenue reduction, like water and sewer, because there's been a big cutback in use at. Many of our larger customers, including the school district and the university. So we're, we're making plans for each of those as we go forward. We want to make sure that we have. Lots of good things happening and the ability to react to things going forward. So that doesn't mean cut, 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 cut. That's part of the strategy. But I think the council has wisely in in the past, including. In two thousand eight, nine, ten, made investments while the economy was was faltering a little bit. And they made those investments to take advantage of getting us ready to get out of the recessionary times. And so, you know, I'm pretty pleased that the council has indicated over time, and I suspect that that's still the case. That we will continue to support economic development. Specifically, right now, housing and industrial expansion abilities, so that we can be positioned for the next positive wave of things. And I know that's difficult because we're, we're dealing with businesses hanging on by their fingernails. Dealing with all kinds of bad things. And the the desire sometimes just shift all focus to that, to the pain and suffering. But we will be doing both. We think it can be a both and thing. We can help work on. Our existing businesses and the help and support they need, but we also need to keep planning for the future, so that we're in a position to take advantage of that when. When things improve. You'll get some modified strategic initiatives. We have, there's things that we want to stop doing because we think we need to focus on other things. That was included in the the crushing COVID plan. I don't have a slide for you this evening, but. We will have that presented in packet materials ahead of time for the council. And we're, we're primarily kind of focused on those five areas. And we've got, so we redid the strategic initiatives into those five areas that we talked about. That I will highlight quickly, the things that we think will be delayed or possibly delayed till twenty twenty two. Any big work on strategy for fire department. Potentially the implementation of the water utility portion of AMI. Working on a strategic plan for the library. The update of the downtown master plan. Working, um, specifically with big initiatives on the new science facility for the UWRF. That project is moving forward in design phase at the university, but we think that they probably can. Work on that without our, our assistance, um, for the next while. Up toward all, the update of the outdoor recreation plan and implementation of the streetlight utility are all things that we expect to delay. Man Valley is also something that we've talked about delaying. But speaking of opportunities, we think there might be some opportunity with the EDA's new programs. There's one point five billion dollars, um, of EDA funding for industrial parks and initiatives to, um. To get going on the economy that that, it may be something we actually need to take advantage of at this point and work about investment. So we're going to continue to try to be adaptable. We're going to look for opportunities to improve ourselves, remove barriers where we can to regulatory, um, barriers in particular. Apply some lessons learned as we go forward so that we can better manage this, these types of crises in the future or disruptions in the future. And then we're going to continue to work, um, closely with our partners, so. That's a lot, um, I guess I'd be mayor willing to take questions that people might have, uh. And go from there.
Question is, who's got a question? No question?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Gonya.
Yep. Go ahead, Chris.
I just want to thank you, Scott, for all the stuff that, uh, you and staff are enduring during this time. And I, I think I've heard that from the council in a couple of different areas here, too. You guys are doing a fantastic job. With that, um, it doesn't come easy. I mean, we're all in it together. We've all got families and jobs and stresses that we're dealing with. But I think the city staff have endured, uh, this quite well, uh, particularly the clerks. They've really, uh, seen the task and I, and I know your staff kind of steps up and works in different areas, but just keep up the great work, guys. Secondly, I would, uh, really thank you for, you know, working to remove the red tape or the regulation. And some of the things locally on our local businesses as much as you can, um, particularly, um, businesses that. Need to move forward with a project or, but like we saw in the last council meeting with some of the development. Stuff, it, it's, if we have an opportunity to move something forward and not hold them up just because of COVID nineteen. I'd love to see that move forward as well, and I, I know you guys are doing a great job and thanks.
Quick question for our police chief, Gordon Young. I wanted to know if, how he feels we're progressing as a city. Thank you.
This is John, I'm just bringing Gordon back in. And he, there in just a second. There he is.
Can you see me and hear me?
Yep.
Uh, thank you for the question. I think we're progressing very well under the leadership of Scott and Jason and the, uh, public health. I think we're doing fantastic.
Thank you.
So Scott, if, if, if I could, as we get down to the four, the four measurements. We're starting to put some ideas around what that looks like and what those numbers might be or what, what those metrics might turn out to be. So that, so that people can understand where we're at in each phase and what it would take to get us to the next phase. Or what has to be maintained in a certain phase and, and, and along with the other changes. I haven't had a chance to watch the mayor's video yet.
Sure.
So maybe it's in there.
Yeah, it's not in this week's video. We're, we're looking to do that, um, as soon as next week's video. So the caveat is, you know, I should, you know, we're frustrated with some of the things from the state. Obviously, but they also should get some credit, I suppose, for the things that they, they are doing. So they've, they've posted DHS's has a dashboard up. And so they've indicated, um. There are most of, I think what they've suggested publicly is most of the measures they're using are now up. Um, and you can kind of, and they're just simply using red or green. So from the state's dashboard, they're saying we either have met it or we haven't. And then they've even provided, you know, you can click through some of those measures and you can get pretty detailed as far as. There's been this question about, well, is it a drop in overall cases, you know, in a relative term? Is it by region? Is it by percentage of cases? Percentage of cases, um. Versus number of tests and how is that all working? And you, you can go into the, their metrics on most of those things and, and figure that out. I would suggest that that's pretty difficult for most people to get at. And so we, our plan, Councilman Morset, is. Get the best localized dashboard we can, recognizing that some of these things are statewide measure. We have a mix of statewide measures, local measures and. What probably could be best categorized as regional. So the hospital stuff, I think we can get some pretty good regional data. As you saw a little kind of hint from, uh, from AZ. The cases, I think we can actually get some localized and put it with the state data. We, we likely can get some good regional or local data on PPE. And so we're going to try to mix that up a little bit and, and give people an idea. Understanding that we don't make the final call as a city right now when we move from phase one to phase two. Or frankly, moving from phase two back to phase one. If we get these, uh, these peaks. So, does that answer the question?
It, it does. I think, I think as I start to talk with, with business owners in the downtown, specifically the restaurant bar owners. They've got questions as they look at the, at the phase one. And it says bars not open, restaurants open. And then it, then it goes back to talk about using, uh, let me get to that spot here. So I'm actually quoting it, but so for instance, this is open restaurants, safer at home, no, but allow takeout delivery. Phase one, yes, with best practices. You know, does that, does that have a cap on it? What, what's the detail behind it? It just says people over the age of sixty. And it says bars open, no, bars are not allowed open, uh, but available for takeout or delivery. Well, you know, you've got restaurant bars all over the place in River Falls that.
Right.
Which category do they fall in? They, they don't understand where they're falling in the plan. There's, there's no metrics there to say, well, okay, in phase one, is it wide open then by the way this reads? Or is it, you know, a, a certain number of people? Do we go up to the allow gatherings? Do we apply the ten people?
So.
Those are all questions I think I'm starting to hear.
Yeah, so co- so council member and others, I mean, I, the, the context here is this is a summary snapshot. Our, our page six on our plan is essentially a snapshot of the Badger bounce back plan. At the time which this was published. The state has since then issued specific, um, through their Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. They've issued kind of what does that mean for bars? Bars right now is still a no in phase one, that there isn't, uh. But there, the state is working on those phase two things. And it's like, well, how many, you know, feet is there between each bar stool? Is it six feet or is it three feet? And is there, is it a capacity, um, restriction rather than a, a physical distancing? So there is resources out there. I know the Chamber of Commerce is willing to help people find those if, so if you're a business in River Falls, you can call the City Hall general number. You can call the Chamber general number. You can email, um, and, and we'll help get them to that. But, uh, but we're not expecting to put that level of detail in our plan. We certainly can help people find the detail. But restaurants, there's a, again, there's a specific. Kind of best practices, so to speak, that are out there. On top of that, all of these associations are lobbying the state, um, regarding what they think the rules should be. So the Wisconsin Park and Rec Association is saying, this is what we think you, you know, swimming pools should look like in the summer. And the, the Wisconsin Soccer Associate, Youth Soccer Association is, is lobbying the state saying this is what. Maybe lobbying isn't the right word for them, but, um, they're saying this is what we think is the guide. And so. The approach that you heard the county outline, which is the approach the city would outline is. Maybe moving away from some of these broad categories and just kind of. Getting all businesses in phase one to be using the best practices for phase one, which are outlined. Which would be outlined sometimes specifically for their business. So there is different things that a, a barber would do under phase one than a bar would do, um, or could do. And so bars may not be open in phase one, but barbers might, um, or vice versa. So I think you're seeing some of that, um, come out. From the state of Wisconsin through their economic development organization. And like DPI is likely to come out with require, you know, rules about, uh, school, summer school. And they're going to probably come out with, here's what we think it's going to look like for the fall. And some of that is awfully slow. They're still trying to gather what they consider to be the best information available to try to make those plans. And there are different paces and levels of urgency based on the thing. And they're, I don't know that there's as much urgency right now to figure out what school looks like on September fourth. As there is to deal with what are we going to do for graduations? And so in some cases, the state is silent on stuff like that. In some cases, they're already releasing guidelines. But bars and restaurants are, are, are a tough go even through phase one and two. The. It's also possible that the state changes and says, you know, right now they say restaurants are open in phase two. And there wasn't any restrictions anticipated. And it may be that they go to a phase one and a half or something where, um, you know, it's in between the ten people and the fifty. Because restaurants have some sort of thing.
Yeah, I, I, we can go through a whole bunch of what-if scenarios on bars and restaurants.
Even though it's not, I mean, businesses in town should understand that even though it is not the city's responsibility nor frankly our authority to tell them exactly when or how or why they're going to open. We want to be a resource to help point them in the right direction and get them to the resources that, that they can use. That, that is a mission we think we have as a, a city organization. We have experience dealing with the state, um, and the county. And so we can try to help them navigate, um, including one-on-one. How to, you know, what, what can I anticipate? Or the other thing we found is we can put them in touch with their peers, other peers that we think really got, got it together. They really are kind of up to date. So there may be a restaurant owner in town that has, you know, the latest and greatest and always seems to know exactly where things are at. We can try to put those restaurant owners together, um, in this time of planning.
So we are going to try to put some metrics together on a regional basis or a state level for the four categories. The trending, the healthcare capacity, the testing and the tracking? Or are we not?
We are, with the caveat that just because we say everything is good in our metrics, doesn't mean we'll have the ability. If there's a conflict between the regional and the state metric. Until the state kind of releases that authority to us, we'll have to go with the state. So if we think our testing capability is top-notch, but the statewide testing capability is terrible. We wouldn't necessarily anticipate the state allowing us to move to the next phase.
Scott, if, if, if I could add, the, um, AZ, excuse me, AZ and Kelly have been very helpful. And have, uh, they're willing and agree to hold weekly check-in meetings with me. And so on Thursdays, um, I can, I will connect with them and get the latest, greatest numbers and, and updates, you know, relevant to what's going on in Pearson St. Croix. And AZ is the one that, um, provides that regional hospital related data to us that will be incorporated into metrics. So we have the connection in place and we have the support of the health officials and just as, just as they have our supportive staff.
Mayor, do you want me to recognize questions or do you want to? I don't know how you want to proceed. I see Councilmember Plunkett, that is hand raised.
Oh, Ben's not on my screen.
Okay, Councilmember Plunkett is. What's your question?
Thank you, Scott. I understand that, that business owners are going to be on their own in terms of legal liability through damages to employees or. Customers or even third party in regards lawsuits, uh, that could be potentially arising from. Injury and death here, that'll be between that business owner and their bank accounts and their insurance companies. But under chapter eight ninety-three of the Wisconsin statutes, the city has some potential liability. Issues going on here. Have we looked at where we're standing with our insurance coverage in regards to those statutes? And how that could be impacting our future financial status, uh, as a government entity? Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, I'd have to look to see what eight ninety-three is. I can tell you, we've taken a look as far as specific risk management that we've looked at. Most of our work to date has been in the employee, um, safety and employee, excuse me, liability. So what obligation we have to the employees re- related to liability. We've expanded it from a practical standpoint, but I would say not a legal standpoint yet to, um, customer service. So how can we reasonably protect our customers, both in the elections and counter service? And if we have to do meter change outs in somebody's home. But that's been primarily on a, on a practical, best practices standpoint, not a liability. So you raise a good question and something that I would su- suggest we haven't dove in. We haven't dived in, dove in headfirst yet. So I'll be happy to take a look at that unless you, um. Want me to do that now, but I can, um, take a look.
I suspect that that'll be, um, a more complex consideration and may need the, uh, some legal opinions on that. Three is just relating to the, uh, legal obligations of, of government entities here.
If, if I may just, um, make a, a quick, uh, statement as a lawyer here, unless we are purposely want to hurt people. If we are taking action as a city, we have immunity.
And I would, I would suggest that's my general understanding in, in the case law that I've been involved with. That, um, we're, you know, on behalf of cities and researching more general, nothing related to COVID specifically. As a city employee, um, you really have to mean to do damage to people, um, before you even start to enter into, to, to some liability. But that's. It's not to say we don't need to take a look. I think it's a good, um. Thing to think about. And we've got, uh, hundreds of other cities and villages in the state that are all thinking, um, about all kinds of things. And so somebody out there is thinking a lot about chapter eight ninety-three, I guarantee. And we can find out what they've found out so far in the league also would be good at that. We also share a lot of insurance carriers between cities, so, um, my, I suspect they'll be helping us. And that's kind of how some of the legal stuff on the employee law, um, employee safety has come through already is. There's lots of people who employ police officers, so there's, there's plenty of information coming through on how to keep them safe. But there's also frankly lots of unknowns, so. Thanks for the question.
More questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor Twelton.
Yeah.
Is there any legal obligations we have partnering with the shared ride taxi service, um, by chance, Scott?
So we, uh, the shared ride taxi service is our service. We contract someone to do that service for us, so there certainly is. So there certainly is some, some potential for liability there. We've got contracts like we have for other services that provide us some, some protection back and forth with them, of us. But I, I would say that we do have some liability like we have for other things. They're not purely separate on their own, um, type of thing. But again, we have pretty broad protections as a city.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
You know, claim, just again, I gotta be careful about getting into areas that I'm not, not an expert on, but it might be of interest based on those two questions is there is process if somebody wants, has a claim against the city in Wisconsin, you, you have to go through a specific process. So I think some of you already have received some emails that are generated out of advocacy software that say, this is your notice and you need to respond to me both as a professional and as personal. You know, both as a city administrator, Scott Simpson, and Scott Simpson as a, as a citizen of the United States, you need to respond to me within so many hours or I'm good, or, or this claim is, you know, valid or whatever. It's, that's how it works. The Wisconsin constitution and statutes are pretty clear that, um, you, you have to go through a specific claim, um, process. And then the city council reviews or doesn't review it. And if you don't, it's considered, um, denied. And then they have the, the court process to go through. So, um, we're going to see stuff we've never seen before. Because I don't think we have any council members that, that have been around for a hundred years. Um, and so we're going to have all kinds of people claiming they can sue us, that, that threatening us. There's all kinds of things that happen. Um, and it's, it's understandable frankly. That doesn't mean it's excusable, some of the behavior, but it's understandable because there's, people are few. Americans love choices and right now there's limitation of choices. Um, and there's real economic harm. Um, and to, and for some families, that's the most important thing. There's real health harm and for other families, that's the most important thing. There's real mental harm for some families, that's the important thing for them. And so, and, and uncertainty is also a real harm. And that's really hurting some people is they just want to know what's going to happen and how it's going to go. And that's not happening right now. Unfortunately, we can try to provide the best we can. So, um, so thanks for those questions. And I, we really feel like we're supportive as staff and I, you know, there's a reason things are going well. It's because we've got a lot of really good, um, folks working on behalf of their community and, and they want to do what's right.
Scott, I think you, or Mr. Mayor, Alderman Gagne.
Yep. Go ahead, Chris.
Scott, you bring up a great point, and I think that's probably on the top of a lot of our minds is the mental health side. You know, we were in a rut before this in our country and in our state with some of the mental health stuff. And I really hope that, you know, locally, I know our chief has been pretty engaged and our local, uh, staff have been pretty engaged in this. But I really hope this kind of pushes that envelope a little bit farther on a county, a state and a federal level as far as, um, helping out with, uh, local mental health issues in our communities and not have it so broad, but enable us, um, with resources to be able to take care of some of that stuff. So I'm glad you touched on that.
Go ahead, Dan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Scott, do you have anything else for us?
No, I think you had, you had a record. If this was a video game, you guys ought to earn a whole bunch of badges and special, special awards. Um, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody else have anything else they want, they needed to ask about? Okay, well, I, I greatly appreciate everybody hanging in there tonight and everything everybody's doing. So, uh, we'll keep moving forward with this and, uh, I think that'll be it for tonight. So thanks, everybody, and take care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and nice work on all the communications.
Thanks, guys.
Christie, did you get everything you needed?